All right.
Okay, nine o'clock, I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting or start the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Republic of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning.
Good morning.
Let's go to approval of the page agenda.
Me? Joe, can I?
Yes, I can.
Thank you.
Morning, Taylor.
Hey.
Lights on your phone.
Listen, oh.
You'll get a bad reflection up here.
It works on its own.
I probably. All right, I got nine oh two, it is the Tuesday, May twenty eighth, twenty twenty four meeting, we have already done a bunch of legions and asked for approval of today's agenda.
Motion to approve today's agenda.
I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded in discussion. And none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, next is approval of minutes five twenty twenty four and five twenty two twenty twenty four.
I make a motion to approve both sets of minutes as presented.
I will second it.
So we're moving seconded in discussion. Are none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next is approval of claims for payment at five twenty eight twenty twenty four.
I will make a motion to approve the May twenty eighth, twenty twenty four claims for payments.
I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded and discussion. Are none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next on the agenda is consideration of River Rivers Edge Trail AT IIP Grant Application Resolution Number twenty twenty four dash sixteen. I haven't had the attorney talk to me on this, requesting that it be tabled.
Um, I'd like to know if we table it, can we still have discussion on the trail in other business?
Well, I, I, we can do it in, yes, in other business of table one, in discussion of table one.
Okay, I make a motion to table Resolution twenty twenty four dash sixteen.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded in discussion, we got people here that need to talk, please.
I, I would, I appreciate them taking their time, so how do you wanna?
I'll let you go, do you have any discussion on the board?
Yeah, uh, I think I'd like to start with Steve, and you can give us an overview where things sit right now. And then Deb, Mike, Carrie, does that sound good? Because I know that I've been contacted by, uh, Mike and Deb and Steve, and I know when I talked to Mike that Carrie was gonna come in and, and, uh, help explain the current situation with the, the Rivers Edge Trail, so Steve.
Which situation are you?
Well, well, the overall, if you, if you wanna give the twenty thousand feet overview, Steve, of where things sit right now and maybe some of the hurdles that we're at, uh, with route, that would be good. And then I know Mike and Carrie have some remedies and relief to help with that, and then Deb talked about some of the financial finances and where we sit with that, if that works. Does that sound equitable?
Sure, absolutely.
Lance, are you okay with that?
Nice, I am, um, do you wanna explain why it was tabled?
Uh, so there were two items.
So everybody has an idea.
So Attorney Meyer thought that, uh, there, in the last two paragraphs, be it further resolved, the two paragraphs that, uh, are there, he believes those need to be, uh, struck from the, the resolution, and then also needs to look at what the long-term, uh, county.
He wants a copy of it.
Yeah, the entire grant, to make sure that we're not committing something eternally that we just can't uh, feasibly maintain, so. Um, I would say it's not a negative thing, it's just good due diligence on our county attorney's part.
Sure, that's fine.
Yeah.
Um, just for, go ahead.
What come up?
I know we're out there.
Yep.
There's a couple aspects that are taking place, one, the connection between, uh, our River Rivers Edge Trail and Harden County, and then there's another one that affects the city with the Fair Board and the communication that they've had with that. So I'll give a little information about, at least my perspective, where we're at with the twenty million dollar that we're gonna be looking for, for a grant application. Of that, a little over twelve million will be applied for, for the grant.
Steve, Steve, uh, so in this discussion, I can only talk about this resolution that's on the table, so we can't talk about the other ones.
Well, as the trail as a whole.
It is discussion on Rivers Edge Trail for this application grant, I just wanna stay, in other business, we can talk about the rest of it.
Then I would just say, they speak about everything under other business.
If that's fine with you guys.
Yeah, yeah, we'll move this through here.
Okay.
I'll call for the vote.
I'm, again, there, there's two aspects here, one that we have with our Rivers Edge Trail with the county and one that the city has.
Yeah, the vote's been called.
What they're making happen.
Give us like five minutes and we'll, we'll get back to you, and then you can cover everything and anything.
Yep.
All right, Flory, Steve.
Um, so roll call.
CJ.
No?
Renee, no. I guess.
Yes.
Oh. I was voting down the resolution.
I need a new motion. Uh, the motion's failed for tabling.
Okay, so I will make a motion to table the Resolution twenty twenty four sixteen.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded in discussion. Are none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries a stable. Consider it, next is consideration or proof resignation Mike Brewer as Ellis Township Clerk.
I'll make a motion to approve the resignation of Mike Brewer as the Ellis Township Clerk.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded in discussion, I hope he can find somebody for us to replace that position, otherwise it is currently open. Um, any other discussion? Are none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next is consideration to approve appointment to filling the remaining four-year term of Harold Barr, which we were told was deceased.
Yes.
And also the Burt, Mike Brewer's township clerk position, I don't have names for either one of them, I just have it on the agenda.
So, um, I'm now.
Nothing to be done.
Nothing to be done.
Right.
Okay, moving on, it's change of status. Sheriff, Sheriff's Department.
I've got the discharge of Blake Monroe, uh, part-time sheriff's deputy, May twentieth, this, uh, Blake had been unable to work any hours, so that's the reason for the discharge.
I will second it.
It's been moved and seconded in discussion. Are none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next I have is the hiring of Heather Stacy, part-time dispatcher at a rate of twenty-one point three an hour effective May twenty-second, twenty twenty-four.
And I will second it.
It's been moved and seconded in discussion. Are none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Next I have is the temporary seasonal part-time hiring of Connor Wise effective May twenty-eight, twenty twenty-four at a rate of twelve dollars an hour.
I will second it.
It's been moved and seconded in discussion. Are none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Next I have is a resignation of Laura Carr, uh, Conservation Administrative Assistant effective June fifth, twenty twenty-four.
I have seconded.
It's been moved and seconded in discussions. Are none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries, another business, we have Steve again.
Back to you, Steve.
I feel like a jack in the box. Okay. Just for clarification, then, back to what we're looking for for a resolution, what the application that we wanna make, combined with Marshall County, is that we're just looking for letters of support from entities that are within the, so why don't we look for Harden County from the city of Eldora and from any other community that we can allow to have happen to give us letter of support for that? It's just a good indication that when you apply for a grant, that the communities that are involved in it are in pretty good participation with it. Uh, it's not tying it down financially, if there is something that you feel like, you'd like to give for that, that would be great. Um, we currently are in the fundraising process between Marshall County and then Harden County. Um, Harden County, we're here, we have the thermometer up at about five hundred thousand, um, we're halfway there, almost at three hundred plus thousand, so we're in good shape to that. Deadline for that is June seventeenth, and so we're looking more to that opportunity.
And this is for how large of a grant, throw that out there.
Yeah, the total cost is for nineteen million and the grant will be for twelve point five. So basically, the letters that we're talking about here, show letters of support is just saying, this is gonna be an opportunity that we want to see Harden County and Marshall Town take, take advantage of. The trail in Marshall Town is owned by the city, and the trail in Harden County is owned by the county, so it's two different entities.
Yep.
Um, Marshall Town has already fully supported that in the last meeting, they had city council unanimously, and they're excited about that. They had their first major fundraiser Thursday of last week, and will have another one May thirtieth. So they're on track and on target, and they're excited about it too. Um, this will be a one-time opportunity to complete the trail. Otherwise, we'll be doing this in bits and pieces, and nickel and dime the people until we're done. But it will be done, this is the one, once, yes, we have to complete the trail, complete the trail.
Now, I've asked a question before, but we're in public comment, or in other business, um, so Marshall, Marshall Town has a majority of this trail. Just so everybody knows, that doesn't mean we're fifty fifty on this fundraising.
No.
They're, they're taking their portion, and you're just fundraising for our portion, correct?
Yeah, yeah, their, their portion's over two million dollars for the anticipation, they're raising funds more, margins of like five hundred thousand.
Right. I just wanna clarify for anybody reporting.
Question, we're happy to answer.
Can the funding, uh, can an entity commit to funding over the course of time, or does it have to be all, can the commitment be made by June seventeenth, but could, uh, I'm gonna throw out City of Eldora here, so City of Eldora said, hey, we wanna donate fifty thousand dollars a year for the next five years. Would that be the in-kind contribution that could be made?
Currently, the in-kind contribution we're looking at is anything over one thousand dollars, and you're broken down into a three-year term period.
Okay.
Anything under five thousand, we're looking for that to be a pledge, and, and payment probably within one year, I'm guessing. I'm guessing of that, but, you know, right now, just to get the application in, we just have to have the pledge of, of the money that we need, we don't even need cash in hand.
Okay, okay.
This will be a three to a five-year project, once bids are let, I'm assuming, so it's not like it's gonna be a quick deal, but it'll be a lot faster than us being on the government's board to get her, get her deunion, union to the county line, to the county line, to Albion, and Albion to Lisco, and then to get her finishing on in Marshall Town.
Okay.
I'll give you a brochure.
Yeah, I got one from Deb, did you get one?
I think this is the pledge brochure.
Oh, okay.
Maybe the information.
Oh, okay.
Renee's on board, so she knows about that. Okay, certainly. Anybody have a question?
Nope.
No.
My, my.
Again, I'll, we're just asking for a letter of support.
Yeah.
No financial commitment coming with this at all, so.
So I'm wondering if it needed to be in a resolution form.
Well.
What are your thoughts, Deb?
Well, I need a resolution form that we can apply for the representation of the county separate from the letters of support that Steve spoke from, which we are getting from each individual city along the trail, okay? So just so that you know that that is, I do need an application, or, excuse me, a resolution that approves us to buy for a federal grant.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, Steve, did you want to, or who wants to address the hurdles in routing?
I think Carrie's the best one to have a laugh.
Lance, is okay if Carrie can come on it?
And or either one can help too.
So I have some maps to kind of help. Um, and these are, it's a two-page map, so it kind of connects like this.
Okay.
But all of them. And so in the brochure that Steve just handed out, you'll see that the route that they're working on in conjunction with Marshall Town and Marshall County connects our bike trail to the statewide network of bike trails. And one of the biggest assets we have here in Harden County is obviously Pine Lake State Park. And so the city of Eldora has tried to, um, essentially connect the bike trail route to Pine Lake. And the maps that I handed out, uh, show you how we proposed that that would happen. We essentially take the current route that comes from Steamboat Rock to Eldora on the east side of town, and we are proposing that we connect from Sixth Avenue, which is up by the county, um, facility on the northeast end of town, comes to by down by the Catholic Church, and then hits the old railroad bend, which curves down to Eleventh Avenue by the elementary school. And then Eleventh Avenue, if you'll remember, we did some road work and things, um, last summer, and we made the bike trail portion part of that project. So from the elementary school to the fairgrounds, that's already done. Um, and then from the fairgrounds out to Memorial Park will connect to the trails that go around the lake and everything, so. The city of Eldora's commitment is to attempt to get this cut through, completed, obviously, like I said, to connect to one of our major assets. Um, we have been granted from the EPA, um, or, excuse me, the Iowa DOT, um, three hundred ninety-seven thousand dollars. We then reallocated some reserve funds that we had from that Eleventh Avenue project, so a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars to make this happen. The hiccup that we're having is the route that was submitted for these grants runs us straight through the fairgrounds property, which, as we all know, is controlled by the Fair Board and owned by the county. Uh, the Fair Board, due to liability concerns, has said they are not interested in that, they do not want us to go through their land. They are open to potentially having us go through the, or on the north side of their racetrack, which is Ninth Avenue. Uh, but we don't have a way to connect to Ninth Avenue if we go that route. And just to let you all know, we did go back to the grant, um, issuers and ask for alternate routes, like through our city cemetery. Um, unfortunately, we cannot do that for reasons of human remains and secondary roadway conjunctions, there were lots of hiccups there. Um, so we are bringing this to the attention of the supervisors and the fair, the larger fair board, or trail board, excuse me. Um, just to let you know that we, we do have a hiccup right now, in order to get this cut through done. We also are on a timeframe, since the monies have already been awarded to the city, we need to start spending those monies by this fall, which means that this spring and summer, we'd like to get some work done, so we can actually cut a check for work done. Um, if we do not have a path figured out and agreed upon, we will have to turn the money, the three hundred ninety-seven thousand dollars back to the DOT, and we will, um, not be able to take advantage of the hundred and fifteen thousand dollars that has already been pledged from the Eleventh Avenue project, as well as a smaller fifty thousand dollar grant that we got from T M O that was to go to this project as well. Um, so our concern is just we've gotta find a new route, and or, and or continue dialogue with the Fair Board, and see if there is some way we can all partner together.
So the Eleventh Avenue, you've already used part of that gram money to construct.
Nope, we use that as part of our bond that we did to reconstruct Eleventh Avenue, so that, that portion that's completed is already completed and paid for by other money.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, the predicament we're in is that the Fair Board has a twenty eighty with us, and we would have to, somebody would have to break the twenty eighty, reopen a twenty eighty, recreate a twenty eighty, it's.
It's messy.
It's messy.
Yep, and, and we do not, to be very clear, we're not talking about this today to in any way insult the Fair Board, we understand they had good reason for making this decision. Um, we're just trying to figure out what a resolution might be. Um, Mike, feel free to chime in if I'm missing something, or if there's commentary, but Mike, Mike serves on city council with me and has been instrumental in the dialogue between the Fair Board, so I don't wanna speak if I'm missing a part of that.
Yeah, I, I would just back up enough to say that there was another group in the city that presented this to the Fair Board in the beginning, and they didn't have great tactics, okay, so they ruffled some feathers, what happened. Uh, so we were put in the second time, and not requiring anything, not telling them what we're gonna do and not gonna do type of stuff, we kind of pleaded to, let's please work together and figure out a way to make this trail happen. Um, basically, we, we need to be able to just cut through the fairgrounds, we said we would close it down during the fair or other events going on, reroute it, you know, um, so that during the fair, bicycles aren't, you know, going right through the middle of the party, we understand that, but uh, we really wanna work with that, and took all responsibility for signage, and we would redirect traffic, that type of stuff, for those particular instances. Um, there was also some past stuff that those of us that are there now had nothing to do with, squabbles with water and fair, and, and, uh, we really wanted to just kind of put everything to rest with that, we've got new city people, and we want to work with the county together, uh, so everybody can succeed with projects, um. And that was my big push when we went to the meeting, is let, let's forget about who said what or done what, and we can't change that, but moving forward, let's work together. Um, so I was saddened to hear that they unanimously voted to reject going through there. We don't have to paint anything, we don't have to pave anything, I mean, it's just a matter of just letting them ride through there on the road that's already currently there, um. So if, if there was any help or suggestions or ways of figuring it out, it sounds like they, it was a liability thing, it's kind of what we're being told. At the end of the day, uh, we thought we had that worked out, the city lawyer went and tried to explain some of that. I don't know where we're at with that or what the next step would be, but I would hate to see us lose this money to get that trail connection done, um, because of some maybe ruffled feathers that are still out there, how, how do we proceed and move forward here?
Could, could there be an alternate route for the grant? Um, for the most part, that road's open and anybody can drive on it anytime they choose.
Yes.
And unless they decide to close it, the Fair Board decides to close it for any reason. Does that route necessarily have to be there, or could it go to that road above as your main route?
So the challenge is, if we go north around the racetrack, we have to still connect from Eleventh Avenue to Ninth Avenue. Um, or we have to go on Ninth Avenue, Ninth Avenue is not currently white enough to paint a bike trail on it. So if we went from where this comes out, um, at the old greenhouse, right on Ninth Avenue and kind of right in my front yard, um, we would have to essentially look at routing all the way along Ninth Avenue there, and that would be a difficult path, given private residents so long there until we get to the Fair Board. Um, if we were to go to Eleventh Avenue and then cut up the west side of the racetrack, east side of the cemetery, um, that is what we learned this morning. Um, sorry, that was communicated over the weekend, I learned it this morning, was that the Fair Board had not discussed the west side of that racetrack, only the, or north. Also, on the north, um, the Fair Board has a very nice, relatively new fence line right up here, and a really nice new course ring right up here, and there's only six feet between the edge of the pavement and that fence, which would not be conducive to the bike trail, bike trail has to be at least eight wide. Um, and then we have a blind corner over here coming into Park Avenue that we maybe have to do some work on as well. Um, again, we're not opposed to that, but it seems like that might be a more cumbersome path than just allowing us to go through what the continuation of the road is. The other thing is, there's no timeframe on how long we would need to keep the bike trail this way. Um, it is a construction grant, which means that we have to approve it to use the money to get the trail built. And then if in a year, we were to sign some sort of partnership agreement, or basically rules and responsibilities list, um, and in a year, the fair wanted to tear down the grandstands and build something different, or whatever, then we can reroute that trail without consequences from the grant. Uh, that's our understanding right now, we are, we are making sure that that is one hundred percent factual, but that is our working understanding now, that if the Fair Board works to allow some pass through, it's not, it's not permanent. Um, they still have total control over what they can and can't do with that parcel. And the other thing is liability Mike touched on, um, we, we are more than willing to be first insured, um, and then because the deed for the land is actually with the county, the county would be named next, and then the Fair Board. Um, so it'd be no different than if I were out there today and I fell in a pothole, you know, my first opportunity to get some money if I were a litigious person would be to come to the county. Um, that said, again, we understand their concerns, um, we're just asking for some help to try and figure out a solution here. Otherwise, we, we don't have a way to do this cut through, to get us to this major initiative that the county has worked so hard to gain traction for, and to connect to Pine Lake.
And to do that, to be clear, there, there's no extra money to reroute it currently.
Oh, sure, during, my saying like during events and things the city's offered?
Well, no, to, to go up the west side.
To do the, oh, oh, sorry, yeah.
To, to extend that, to not go through the fairgrounds at all. That's kind of a deal breaker also, because we don't have the funds to do that extra section.
Yeah.
Well, I think that we need the city council, we need the Fair Board, and we need the county all together in one room.
We would be very open to that.
I mean, I.
Yeah.
We, we can talk, but unless everybody's.
Yeah.
So that's what I spoke to Mike about, I think, bringing everybody to the table and having, you know, uh, face-to-face discussions during that. That's significantly better return on investment.
And, you know, we, we were, we respect Eldora, we also respect the Fair Board, so it's, it's really a tough decision here.
Well, and I don't think, that's kind of what we wanna avoid, right, we don't want to make, we all wanna work together, we don't want it to be a situation where, you know, I kind of feel like even talking this morning, it's a little bit like the city's coming to tell mom and dad, brothers, it's something we didn't like. And that's not what we want, we, we know that this is a huge initiative for the county.
I, I don't think it's portrayed that way, Carrie.
Good. Um, if you, if the supervisors would be willing to call that meeting, um, I think they, we would have we, we have had dialogue with the Fair Board, I think they felt like we've made a decision, the discussion's done. Um, if you all are feeling like, hey, we could potentially still be productive and have a conversation, it would be very much appreciated if the invitation for that meeting were to come from you.
Yeah, it'd still be difficult to put a right through that street, though.
Yeah, and we're, we're open to talking through any options.
What do you mean, which street are we talking about?
Right through. They have it right in front of the grandstands, the street, well, it's not a street, but they call it Eleventh Ave.
Yeah.
And it, it splits the fair in half.
But it would re, what, we would reroute it during the fair, or it would not split the fair.
Right. And like I spoke with Mike, uh, and I'll tell you, Carrie, you know, the other three hundred fifty-five days a year that fair isn't active, the the significant amount of traffic and tourism and, and economic impact need to be weighed and, and and it respected as well.
Does it have to be a trail, a paved trail?
No.
No, we don't even have to paint a line through there. Nothing needs, nothing has to happen, we offer to put some signage up if, if the Fair Board would like that.
So.
Nothing has to be painted, paved, nothing, nothing has to be done.
So, so for example, if you made the route on the around the horse barn on the, on, around the track, or even cut through the horse barn, I don't care where that driveway is, you made that trip around the backside of the track, on the west side of the track, and connected back to Ninth Avenue with a dirt trail, we'd still have the pavement there, people wanna take shortcut, they could take shortcut all day long.
Correct.
I don't.
But the designated.
I can't answer that if it can be dirt or rock, or.
Well, that's why I was curious.
For that, I was meaning for the pasture that we're, we're currently looking at, and not.
And Mike, you even mentioned, you know, reaching the olive branch of, you know, doing some seal coating and, and, and maintain, helping maintain the surface through there as well. So I, I, I agree with you, Lance, I think bringing everybody to the table, uh, I would also like to have Marty Wymore here, because I think some of his interpretation, uh, of what rerouting and, you know, what type of surfaces would be allowed, what won't be allowed, would be important too.
Well, and we could, we could also invite, um, Scott Flag as the administrator of the grant, or panel liaison that we've been working with, as well as Lucas Wilson from CGA, who was our, um, engineers on this, Lucas was with us when we went back to the Fair Board in, um, last month. Um, so, you know, they all have very good input on the restrictions of the grant, what could or couldn't happen, so.
Can somebody tell me, so what's the reason that the trail couldn't take a three-block detour up, you know, uh, up park and then over on Ninth Avenue?
It's roadless, so I don't.
So, so if you're talking.
Right.
Like racetrack coming up, coming up here and going this way?
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, the Fair Board is open to the north side, but no discussions to come through here from between the cemetery.
Okay.
And, and I think that's probably because there's just not very much space there.
Sure, I think they have camp sites there right now.
Yeah, and so.
But what would happen if you just came up park and just straight across on the street? I know there's some towns where when we ride, the trail ends and you have to. I know there's some towns where when we ride, the trail ends and you have to ride three blocks.
The grant specifies that it has to be designated specifications for the trail, and Ninth Avenue is not wide enough to paint a bike trail that's eight feet wide. And so if we were to come this way and head back to the west, you know, like we came up here and, okay, we're going this way on Ninth Avenue to connect here instead of Eleventh Avenue, two things come into play. The money we spent to get this portion of twelfth, Eleventh Avenue, that part of the project is kind of wasted. I mean, I hate to say that. Um, and then secondly, you would have to enact some sort of eminent domain with these residents along here, and we're not gonna be willing to do that, no.
Okay, yeah, I think the next step is just getting everybody to the table.
Eleventh Avenue project from Washington to the fairgrounds is completely paid for bicycle journey.
Okay.
And, and when that project was done, it was done with the understanding that this path had been approved. Now, we know there's been some miscommunications about that and some confusion now. Um, but at the time, we moved forward with that Eleventh Avenue prop, uh, Eleventh Avenue portion, it was understood that this was approved and ready to go, and we now know that's not true, so.
Can we get a copy of the twenty eighty agreement that, uh, the county has with the Fair Board?
Should be able to.
Yeah.
Yeah, should be at the auditor's office, or the recorder's office. If I remember, it's from two thousand two.
Okay.
See, I don't know if you could talk about that loop a little bit. I'm not a bicyclist by any means, so you guys don't want me on there with my Harley, but.
Well, that's John.
There's, there's a loop there with the trail, um, around Pine Lake and then even it'll make a loop to Steamboat, uh, Gene, he has some of the heat dance on that.
Sure, yeah, do that. Um, if, if any of you are familiar with that all, with Memorial Park, that's where it connects and goes over the Iowa River Bridge and heads east.
Thank you, Kerry.
Yep, and then heading down al- along S fifty-six, I believe that's the correct highway, but that, then around Pine Lake and then through upper and lower. And then when you get up to the upper part of it, then you get on the highway, and then you go towards Steamboat Rock. And you get off there before the curve starts, as you go back to the east, and then you drop that down to what we call the switchback, which is just a several loops to get you up and down the hill, so it's not straight down. And then that connects to the Iowa River's edge trail and Steamboat Rock right there on the Iowa River Bridge. That makes a really nice connection in there. So the, the Eleventh Avenue.
It's about five, like a twenty-six mile loop, the whole thing?
No.
It's eleven, so it's five and five.
The loop is just, yeah. But you're riding from Steamboat to Eldora after you're getting near twenty-six hundred.
It's a great ride, but for me, I don't like riding highways, so, you know, but there is a bicycle path that's on both sides of the highway, which the, um, the county helped with that one, so Taylor knows about that too, but, yeah, I mean, it's like maybe three feet at most or whatever. I know, you know.
Four, and that's why the speed limit is only forty-five, so the nine, it doesn't technically meet the requirements for fifty-five mile an hour.
Right, right. I just know, it, a lot of riders don't like that portion of that, so, but it is a great connector, so it's a little bit all of that, so. It's just somewhat ironic that the county owns the trail, the county owns the fairground property. And so we're at a little bit of a dilemma as to why the communication, communication can't take place for, um, this type of a connection to make it the easiest to connect with Eleventh Avenue project.
Right, you also find out too that Eldora has Memorial Park, which is our largest trailhead in the community. If we can't connect the trailheads, we, our guests are coming to our community and kind, there's no way we're finding, you know, there's no solid path for them to connect. And it's so important to bring them into our downtown and our service area as well. Everyone wants small business to thrive. If you don't have directional signage and a route for places for people to go and, you know, where to park and it, it's just so important, that connectivity.
It is, yep. The connectivity is huge. I mean, when we start going south to Marshall County, it connects with Lynn Road. It connects with all of those other trails that go south on Highway thirty. Um, it, it, it's gonna be a great opportunity if we'll take advantage of it. Now is our time to make that decision. If we fall short of it, we'll be battling this for a long time. We're not guaranteed the grant, so, um, but we're very hopeful with it, so. Appreciate your support. If we can get that from the board, that'd be great.
Any other business?
I have one item. I spoke with Thomas earlier and brought to my attention that and I read about it in, uh, the Times, the Siren, so I, I think it deserves a little bit of attention that every community is responsible for their own sirens. So, uh, one of the things I remember from a few years ago, uh, and, and Thomas brought it up today. The Larry Ball dance used to ride up to the Deprobative Fire Station on his golf cart during the middle of a storm. And you would have to stand in the fire station and hold the button. I mean, it could be blowing, you know, ninety miles an hour. There could be, you know, funnel pods over top and here it'd be buzz there, pushing the button. So, um, while I wish we could control the weather and the lightning strikes and technology, it's just not possible at this point. And it really comes down to each community having, uh, control of their storm sirens. Um, I know in Ackley, I don't remember who it was, but they used to go into the Public Works Building and somebody during the middle of the storm or before it hit, scurried up this little ladder, and they'd have to go in and, and trigger the siren there. And I remember, uh, one of the gentlemen that was asked to go do it didn't quite fit up the tunnel. And so, I mean, the joke was, is, you know, do we spray him with Crisco or something like that to make sure he can get up and down the the chute to go, uh, take care of that? Um, so it, it's not a matter of, uh, Thomas. I know Thomas aids the communities. And I know Dave as the sheriff and overseeing the communications center does that, but that's doesn't really fall, it, it doesn't at all fall on the supervisors to make sure every town's maintaining that. Uh, we have one spot on the nine-one-one commission board, which somewhat has a little bit of authority, but helps fund it more than maintain it and upkeep that. So I just wanted to make sure that there's a clear understanding that we don't control the weather and we don't control the upkeep and maintenance over the sirens, so. Um, I know that the supply chain issues with the six to eight week turnaround on a part um, is, is also an issue, but again, out of the hands of the three of us. But, uh, each community has to work on those issues on their own. So I just wanted to clarify that, and I thank you, Elaine, for bringing attention to the issue, so.
I'm just saying.
Thomas.
But I warned you.
I did warn you.
So we have taken responsibility for that, and we had RC Systems come in and do a workaround of that part.
Okay.
So we are back up and running on a backup system. We cannot guarantee it to be a hundred percent, just like we can't guarantee our pages to go out a hundred percent into the backup system. Um, but we did that last week. We called RC Systems and had them come over and reroute around that uh, failed part until we can get that back up and running. So we have, we've done what we can do.
Right.
On the county side, but it is still a city, each city is still responsible for their sirens.
And there's still nothing better than, uh, weather radio or having your alerts on your cell phone.
The sirens are outdoor only.
Right.
Outdoor warning sirens is what they're labeled.
Yeah.
And so we have Alert Iowa, and we put that out there. Everybody has TV, they have their phones and tornado warnings. Tornado warnings always go out under the national alert system and everybody's phone, we don't even have control of that. Everybody's phone is gonna be alert.
Yeah.
Unless they turn them off, and that's their privilege. I mean, that's their right to turn the lights off on their phone, but it's also not my responsibility at that point.
Yeah, and I know you and Dave and the communications folks and our one representative on the nine-one-one board have helped funnel money to communities. I know Union didn't have a siren for years. Uh, and then we had, they found one behind a building in Ames, and I don't know if they.
Right, but we, we don't have a budget.
No.
To be able to do sirens.
Correct.
There's, I mean.
Yes.
Towns.
Correct. Thank you, Thomas. I appreciate it.
Any other business? Public comments? In German.
I'll second that.
Been moving second at all, favor say aye.
Aye.
Most carries for turn.